Campus place please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning everybody, welcome to the Porter County Board of Commissioners regularly scheduled meeting here on Tuesday, August 15th, 2025. We'll start with the consent agenda.
Approval of payroll July 18th and August 1st, 2025. Approval of claims June 26th, July 17th, July 24th, and July 31st, 2025. Approval of minutes July 15th, 2025. Ways and measures annual reports July 16th, 2024 through June 15th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. We have one announcement, accepting applications for the West Porter Fire District to complete the term of Guy Kosmatki, which will end December 31st, 2025. No political affiliation is required. Must be a Porter County resident of the West Porter Fire District, however, also must have experience in fire protection. Applications must be in by Thursday, August 21st, 4:30 PM. We're going to jump off here for a quick second. We have a request to use the southeast and southwest corners of the courthouse grounds on Sunday, August 17th, from 4:45 PM until 7:15 PM. Hold a 50, 501 rally. They will have handheld signs and one table.
That's correct. What do you have to talk to me about?
I received, as well as the other two commissioners, a snapshot, a photograph of some graffiti that was written on the sidewalk during the last demonstration.
You do have people writing on the chalk. What was the graffiti on it?
Well, I'm not going to, I can show you it. It was not something I would say in a public meeting, so.
I'm guessing this isn't one of the ones for little kids' sake?
Well, I hope, a little kidding. He's calling that word up.
Oh, I didn't see this one. Okay.
Well, here's what we're going to do. I'm going to, I've already talked to the county attorney about it. We're not going to allow that. You have families walking down there doing business in downtown, and we're not going to allow that. I'm going to ask, if this has happened again and the Sheriff's Department is there, if somebody is held accountable for it. We're not, we're not going to, you know, it just seems like every time we have one of these, Deb, it gets ramped up. You know, it's more megaphones.
I think the country isn't ramping up. I don't think it's just Valbo, Jim. I think it's Chesterton. I think it's Michigan City. I think it's Lake County. We've been fortunate here. We haven't had any violence. They've had violence.
Well, I don't, you know, you all have the right to be upset over whatever it is you're upset about. That is not my, you know, I'm not making any comment toward that at all.
I agree.
But that is, that is hollow ground out there, as far as this commission is concerned. You start defacing that out there, somebody's going to go to jail.
I would not have written that. It would not be something I put on a sign or the sidewalk.
Well, Deb.
And I'm sorry that someone did. If I had seen it, I would have crossed it out, Jim.
I appreciate that, but it's your name going on these permits.
It absolutely is.
So I don't know if you, you have to hire security to make sure stuff like that doesn't happen.
I think I can just tell them not to do this because we've never had that happen before. And we've had people chalk the wall before and never had that. And I will talk to, I will make an announcement both in the, on the.
Well, I don't even understand why they're chalking the wall to begin with, whatever they're putting on it.
Another tool.
It's there all week long until somebody washes it off, which is not anybody in your group.
Probably.
Look, the people who come downtown, for whatever reason it is, whether it's to visit somebody, to visit a business, to purchase a mill someplace, are just, are just to walk around beautiful downtown, though. They shouldn't have to see that.
No, I agree with you. They shouldn't have to see that.
And I don't know.
And had I seen it, I would have, I would have gotten, I would have chalked it off. Or dumped water on it because we always have water for our protesters. But I would never have allowed that one. I'm sorry it was there. I tend to be walking around during the whole thing, and I don't look down a whole lot. I'm usually scanning the crowd and I will make sure that that never happens again.
I mean, nobody going downtown deserves to read that kind of stuff.
Absolutely not. And we have little kids at our rallies.
On courthouse property, no less.
I understand. I understand.
Well, this is your, this is the only warning you're going to get.
Okay. All right. I get it.
Now, I, we have been very accommodating to you, I think you would agree. And we haven't asked a whole lot from you.
No, you have not.
We, we understand that you have a right to be out there. What you don't have a right to do is deface property.
And I would agree that that is absolutely defacing property. And we will, I will make sure. You know, I usually walk around afterwards to make sure there's no garbage left, no water bottles, no anything. And I don't know how I missed it, and I'm sorry that I missed it.
Now, how can I help you today?
Well, I don't know. You seem kind of cranky at me. I don't know if I'm going to ask for a favor.
I wasn't cranky before I started this.
Wait, before you started my part?
And I apologize if I'm coming across, that is just, that is just.
I agree.
I think that kind of stuff is very personal.
I understand. I.
And I think our residents expect us not to allow it.
My name is on the permit. I don't want that under my name either. That was wrong.
All right. How can I help you?
I will not be here for the next county meeting, and we are planning a rally for September 1st. Can we slide that in today, or do you just want it not, what do you, how do you want it, do you want me to turn someone on?
On December 1st?
No. Did I say December?
No. You probably said September. My hearing is not what it used to be.
My speaking is.
Not having, not having our audio today is not helping. So.
I won't be here.
I'm going to leave it up to the board. Whatever, either we can approve it today, or we can request that you come before us in our next meeting. When is our next meeting?
The 20th, and I won't be here. I'm in Kansas.
But don't you have a, I see you have a.
Well, Lisa can come, but I decided we could slide it in today.
It's up to the other two commissioners. What would, what's your pleasure? Come to the next meeting.
Okay, I'm not here, so.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yeah, but you can, you can come here and replace it on the.
I could, I could. The permit's actually in her name, which is the only.
As long as we don't have a problem with it, her being her surrogate to come at our next meeting.
You know how to sign your name, right?
Yeah, yeah. I just didn't know that she can still own the permit.
That's fine. We'll just, we'll see you there.
Okay, okay.
Anything else?
That's my.
All right, thank you.
And I am sorry about that.
I know you are.
It was, it hadn't been seen. I would have.
I know.
We need to.
You can approve the request for. Yeah, 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 we have to do it through, the, the request that was on there?
Yes.
We have a request to use the southeast and southwest corners of the courthouse grounds on Sunday, August 17th, from 4:45 PM until 7:15 PM, to hold a 50, 501 rally. They will have handheld signs and one table. You have a motion, Sunday evening?
Yes, Sunday.
Yeah, goes into Sunday evening, 7:15. All right, good or time?
I move that we approve the request as stated.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. All right, moving on. Commissioner, receive open bid for exterior and sealant replacement for the sheriff's office and jail. So before.
It doesn't work exactly.
Doesn't work.
So before we open the bids, we did have this advertised. The bids were due by 9:00 AM in this building. We did have one bid dropped off after the cutoff date. We will not be opening that or taking that into under consideration today. We are, that particular bid came from Western Specialty Contractors. Joe, you have any statement?
Uh, no. The attorney did mention the fact that these were due in the office at 9:00 AM. That is correct. According to the notice of interest that was published.
So who advertised?
The county did.
We sent the publication over to the newspaper.
Okay, but we, the planner's office seems to be out by the future. Very first one is Burgland Construction.
Base bid of $164,000. Base bid of $164,000 from Burgland Construction.
The next bid is Garia Construction.
Garia Construction, $242,000. $242,000. Garia Construction.
The next bid is Corella. The last bid accepted is Restore Works.
Base bid of $186,875. Base bid of $186,875. Restore Works. According to the paperwork we have in front of us, Western Specialty Contractors submitted as well, but they submitted late?
Correct.
Okay. Joe, you want to take these, look at them?
Yeah, we'll take these over with the architect and the engineer. Thank you.
You're welcome. Great News Life, a 2025-26 upgrade, upgraded original partner profile partnership in the amount of $20,350.
This is a continuation of the contract that we've had for a couple of years, which is taking the place of Kurt Ellis, who is our media specialist. They are functioning in that role as our media specialist.
We have a motion, motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. GIS, High Street Employee Benefits Renewal. We have third-party administrative services agreement, stop-loss plus captive reinsurance and consulting agreement, and AFTA Health. Aye.
Good morning, Commissioner. So several vendors, as you said, supporting the county's employee benefits program are up for renewal. At the June meeting, the commissioners did vote and approve already one component, which was the pharmacy benefit manager. So happy to report that that implementation is in process for October 1st with the move from Optum to Prime. The decisions still needed are on the third-party administrator, the stop-loss carrier, the captive reinsurance protection, as well as the AFTA Health agreement. So GIS, now known as High Street, we did complete a full market review of these services and all the programs within the employee benefits package, if you will. So here today to present those findings, answer questions, and give direction on that set.
What is the due dates on each one of these contracts that they have to be renewed?
So our contract ends at the end of September. The reason that we're coming before you today is to get a decision to prepare for open enrollment. So when we go out to market for stop-loss offers, they look at our claims data. And so the offers from stop-loss that we had today, they were good for 15 days, so they expire on August 12th.
And that's for the third-party administrator?
That is for stop-loss.
Stop-loss. How about the third-party administrative services agreement?
The third-party administrator services agreement, again, the current contract is good through the end of September. They are seeking a decision 60 days ahead of renewal, so that would be by the 1st of September, or excuse me, 1st.
And then we have the consultant agreement.
Correct. There is no change to the consulting agreement. There is no signature required. It was a simple line item to say that no changes are needed.
When is, when is that current contract play out?
The current contract plays out at the end of the year, and then there's a clause in there that just says it continues as is unless a change in writing from either party.
AFTA Health, what is that?
Uh, we are in the second year of a three-year contract with AFTA Health. That is our care coordination component, and again, we're entering the third year of that agreement. So the renewal is more formality.
Well, here's a quandary we have. We have, we met last week on a Zoom call with an insurance provider. And that has promised us that we can save up to $3 million a year on our claims. Now, you know, some of us up here kind of looking, looking at that with one eye closed, and others up here are like, okay. But either way, we, you know, we're, and you're fully aware of this, you know, we struggle, our counsel does, to come up with funds needed to properly fund our insurance program. So we can't, we cannot just ignore an offer like that to us. Now, that may come out not to be accurate. I don't know. Nobody up here knows that. But we, we're going to sign an NDA, and that's going to allow them to look into our program and to see if there is that, those types of monies that can be saved. Now, I know we need to, we need to have a third-party insurer. Now, my recommendation is that we go ahead and, and approve that today. But the rest of this, we should, I think we should hold off until we know more about what we're likely to do by the end of the year.
Okay, so my understanding of the alternative offer is that it is a reference-based pricing solution. I had come before the commissioners in the spring outlining the strategic plan that the employee benefits committee was tasked with adhering to this year. In that meeting, the commissioners voted against exploring reference-based pricing as a solution due to the impact that it would have on the members and their families, the employees of the county. So that's why High Street, as the consultant to the county, did not explore reference-based pricing options. And that's why we don't have an apples-to-apples offer to present before you today.
Well, I think it's a little more complicated than just simply, you know, reference-based pricing, is my understanding. And it's not to say even if we were told that, yes, I look at your claims, we can save this money. You know, it's not, it is not going to be my recommendation that the plan is handed over to them. We'll open it back up and let you and everybody else, you know, submit, you know, proposals once you understand what we're looking at. But at the same time, you know, it's going to take them, you know, some time, as you, as you are probably aware, to look at the data that they need to look at to determine what they can, you know, save us. So we're going to, you know, we're not going to be able to, we're going to have to keep moving here, so. But I, you know, as far as a consulting agreement. Scott, you know, I'm not intimately familiar with those, with those agreements or contracts. Is there, is there out there for us?
Yeah, at the end of the year, there's a possibility.
Okay.
Well, my concern is if we're trying to do this while we have, we have our stop-loss insurance running out at the end of September. We had our third-party administrative services agreement running out at the end of September. And by the way, in that meeting in March, we did vote, because I had sent that information from that company to Candace in January. I forwarded it.
Yeah, we did some formal vetting, and Rhonda was called up before. So the county has been on a reference-based pricing plan before, and it was not the greatest experience, either financially nor from a member impact perspective. To be very clear, I'm limited in what I can say before a public meeting because of privacy purposes. But we have some very sick people, people on very complex healthcare journeys that we're caring for. And to disrupt that care could be detrimental, particularly without the time and ability to adjust their providers, their treatment plans, and so on.
Yeah, I'm fully aware of that. We've been given insurance that it wouldn't.
Speaking of the timeframe, as you stated, there are certain things the county cannot say. When employees do not get a denial until two weeks after they've started treatment, it doesn't seem like the way to handle situations.
Right, and, and part of High Street's role is to hold our vendors.
But I meant it was after, after contact with them the second week of treatment, so they were denied.
There was an instance that was brought to my attention last week on Wednesday that we are working with the teams on. So AFTA ultimately doesn't decide. What decides is the summary plan description. It's the legal governing document of the health plan.
But the employee is already going through this difficult time, trying to find the correct treatment, and then to get a denial letter does not put them in a good position.
No, I completely understand. And, you know, healthcare as a whole is not perfect. I think many would agree that there are parts of the.
That's an understatement.
Broken, exactly. So I'm not here as an advocate for health insurance companies. I'm here as a consultant to the county to help the leadership team make informed choices in the best interest of both the budget and the membership.
Well, we can just go back historically for everybody's preference. In January, I had received the same information that the two of you received. I forwarded it to Candace. In our February meeting that we had, we looked at that, and Scott suggested that you come to our next commissioners' meeting, which was in March, and do a strategic plan, and that we would take a look at the different models of insurance. And at that time, the commissioners voted to hold off on that until second quarter of 2026, looking, relooking at that. And so based on the decision of the commissioners in March, you have since followed along the path of what we had agreed to in that meeting.
That's correct. And to be clear, I don't advocate for any particular insurance company, any particular funding mechanism, any particular network. Again, my role is to keep everyone aware of what's happening in the market, what the different options are, what the pros and cons of each are, and then, again, ultimately, so we can go to market, procure the quotes that the commissioners have expressed an interest in, so that we can look at those leading up to renewal and make informed choices on the future of the.
And I have no problem investigating this company. I really don't. I just think that the timeframe that we have with our insurance running out and our contracts running out at the end of September, I just don't think that we can have something in place in time.
Well, we're not, yeah, we're not, we're not going to let anything run out. That's why I asked, you know, if, if these contracts are written in such a way that we can opt out pretty much anytime we want with a notice. Well, just, just their consulting agreement, not all the underlying contracts. Their consulting agreement hasn't out at the end of the year. AFTA has the rest of this year and next year. Stop-loss, the stop-loss and captive is every year. And then the third-party administrator, both of those run out September.
Correct. And the reason that it expires at the end of September and has an October renewal date is because a couple of years ago, we said, we need to move this from January 1st because we need the numbers in before budgetary season, so that, again, leadership can make informed choices. Now, the employees' plan, their deductibles run on a calendar year. So the employees won't go through open enrollment until November, and their deductibles will reset in January. But again, our contracts were backed up to allow us to have the numbers we need to set the budget ahead of time. So we said a lot of not-good news. I didn't come with only bad news. So I guess just to pivot for a moment, so nationally self-funded insurance plans are trending at a 12% to 15% increase. And that's due to partially, you know, claims, but a lot of the things that we see in the news every day. So, you know, tariffs, advances in medicine, increase in pharmaceutical costs, increases in prevalent cancer cases, things to that nature. The renewals that we received are well below the national average of 12% to 15%. So I am excited to report that news. So I know that any increase is a challenge to bear. But again, we are trending well below national average. So even with our loss ratio at 80%, we were able to obtain five competitive stop-loss offers. We were able to leverage those offers to negotiate a favorable renewal with Berkeley Accident and Health. So if we were to renew UMR, Berkeley Stop-loss, Berkeley captive reinsurance, as well as AFTA, the overall increase is 9.3% to the total program expected cost for medical and pharmacy. We did look at alternate specific deductible options as well, and found that an increase of $25,000 to our specific deductible from $175,000 to $200,000 further reduces our expected program cost to only a 7.5% increase. So we're doing a lot of the things the right way, and again, AFTA Health, we're in the middle of a three-year agreement, so that renewal is largely, largely procedural.
So Scott, your, what is your recommendation that the commissioners must approve today? The UMR third-party and the stop-loss, because we run out on both of those, which is the heart of the health insurance program.
So I did provide.
In September, is that correct?
Correct, and the stop-loss contract, or excuse me, the captive.
Because those go together.
Yes.
Our third-party, which is your, for everyone else out there, that's your anthems, your UMRs, those names, okay? Maybe not exactly those names, but third-parties for those, then going to, then along with our stop-loss, which is our reinsurance, which is, those two things go together, and those two are expiring in September.
Right, as well as the captive reinsurance later. So we have two reinsurance layers. One is the stop-loss policy, one is the captive.
Well, my recommendation is that we, we have no choice. We have to renew those, or they're going to run out. But the rest of this, we hold off on. You know, I, I understand when you come and tell us that, you know, it's only, it's only going up 7% or 8%, which is below industry standards. That doesn't help us. We, you know, we are on a trajectory with the cost of this insurance program. It's not. It's not sustainable. It's just not. Not with the current, not with our current, you know, resources available to county government. So we, we owe it to everybody that we roll up our sleeves and get creative here, even if it means that somebody gets, you know, inconvenienced, you know, over it. And my recommendation to you is, if you, you want to be part of that, then get creative. But we've had the same pro, the same company that's been managing this for us for, what, eight years?
No, so we made a move from reference-based pricing, we made a move to UMR and to Berkeley because of the savings, because of the increased access to data and transparency.
I'm talking about GIS.
Oh, for GIS, roughly five, six years. I have to go back to the exact.
You've been, you've been here longer than that.
Okay.
You've been here longer. But it needs, neither, you know, five or six years were the state years.
And Rex's district commissioner, like, I'm a Porter County resident, I pay taxes here, my children go to school here, I have a vested interest in making sure that this is a great place for people to live, work, and play. That's why we have a three-year strategic plan aimed at optimizing the employee benefits program. And anytime the commissioners receive an email about a cross-containment strategy or a new thing in the market, we encourage you to send that to us. We, we're not hiding anything. We want to evaluate everything. We want our program to be bulletproof and where it's found to not be bulletproof, we want to make changes. And a great example of that is our analysis of the pharmacy benefit manager that we did. We are in essence firing OptumRx in favor of Prime Therapeutics because of the analysis that my team ran. And we found that move yielding $747,000 in savings to the county. We also had American Fidelity come in to do the dependent verification audit, where we found some people who were dependents, who were ineligible to any longer beyond the county health plan, and we assisted in removing those individuals in favor of their own employer coverage or whatever the result was, which yielded about another $160,000 in savings. So, I mean, we have found about a million dollars in savings. And any self-funded plan, the bulk of the spend is claims-driven. So the expected increase is just that, it's expected. But if these strategies perform as anticipated and as expected, then we could actually see less of it. But we need to give you guys a number to go off of budget-wise, and that's where the actuaries of the stop-loss firm come in to give advice.
Yeah, I understand and I appreciate the work that you guys have done, but it, to me, the chair, you know, from my chair, it looks like we take, take one step forward, one step back, two steps forward, one step back, and so on. And it just, we are really in a position now where we have to really think out of the box here to see if there is a smarter, more efficient way of doing this. And that does, that does, GIS can be part of that. Very well, maybe, I don't know. But I, but if I've got a company coming to us and saying, we can save you $3 million, it would be irresponsible of us to say, now we're not interested.
I completely agree. And that's why when Marv brought it to me in the spring, I said, hey, is this the path you guys want to explore? Here's the pros, savings, here's the cons, right? And we talked through some of those and again, Rhonda came up to explain what her experience had been. So I'm an insurance nerd. I love, you know, finding these things and optimizing programs and I just encourage anytime there's an idea or an email, like, certainly you're welcome to bring it up. Also understand if you need to engage other parties to make sure you're doing your due diligence.
Well, we'll do our due diligence, for sure. So what's the board's pleasure here?
Well, I move that we approve the third-party administrator services agreement as well as the stop-loss plus captive reinsurance agreement.
I'll second that. They have a motion as well as a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Okay, thank you. Memorial Opera House, Gary up. You have a final payoff in the amount of $54,163.5. Good morning.
Good morning.
And what is that for?
This is their final payoff.
This is their final.
Closing it out.
Is that the last?
Should be the last one.
Of all of them?
For retainage.
Final for the MOH.
Okay. And what budget is to cover all this still?
That's correct.
We're taking a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
They have a motion as well as a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Jail?
Jail, item number one is an escrow agreement between First Merchant Bank and Porter County Board of Commissioners for a carry-up construction. This is the same thing we did on the highway, basically holding the retainage at the bank. They get to make a little interest on it, just something a lot of contractors want to.
We're taking a motion. Motion approved.
Second.
They have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Scott, can we do two through seven together?
Yes.
You want to go ahead and read those?
Yep. Garry of Construction, payoff number three in the amount of $137,218. Kleckner Interiors, payoff number two in the amount of $3,219.55. Stafford Smith, payoff number two in the amount of $78,398.51. Happy Moran, payoff number three in the amount of $781,534.60. Quality Control Systems, payoff number two in the amount of $493,726.24. H&amp;T Electrical Services, payoff number three in the amount of $206,301.52.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as well as a second for approval of items two through seven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Don't buy a jail, they're expensive. Highway Department.
Highway Department, this first-line item, Gary of Construction, payoff number eight, it should be in the amount of $304,546.18.
Forty what?
Oh, okay, sorry.
$304,556.18, correct? Okay. Go ahead and read all of them.
Yep. Gulf Incorporated, payoff number five in the amount of $30,210. Easy Babilah, payoff number one in the amount of $96,440.67. Kleckner Interior, payoff number six in the amount of $69,300.17. Build Fire Protection, payoff number four in the amount of $60,147.83. Bloomfield Mechanical, payoff number six in the amount of $45,091.47. Circle R Mechanical, payoff number 11 in the amount of $85,745.10. Circle R Electric, payoff number seven in the amount of $29,220.82.
Motion to approve.
Second.
They have a motion as well as a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Are we still, we still on our, we still on our target date of completion on that?
Yeah, if we, if Marv and I just walked back there, we will look over the milestones. So we're hoping here in the second week of September to roughly turn over the administration building to, to the Highway Department.
In September?
Yeah.
When are you going to start demolition of this?
As soon as we get them moved, everything's dialed in, their data's up and running, we'll start demolition.
We'll take it formally, I drove by Friday, I think.
What's that?
See, I drove by the site Friday, it was really taking form.
So you'll see the masonry on the front of the administration center already done here probably in a week, so that'll move out, site facilities are going in. NIPSCO's been out there, water's going to get through out of there soon. I think we've got a hot cap scheduled this week, so things are taking place.
Good, good. Well, thank you so much. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Porter County Museum, Kevin Pazar, Gary, here's, I haven't seen him sit there. Hi, Kevin.
Good morning, commissioners.
You're requesting permission to act as co-chair for the official city of Albarazo semi-quantennial.
Semi-quantennial. And so America 250 is probably the easiest thing to say. You know, I was asking for this permission, but I thought also, knowing we're coming up on the 190th anniversary of our own county, if there was somebody sort of coordinating that effort and given my role with the museum and as county historian, I'd be willing to offer my services to do that as well.
Well, we, we spoke on the phone.
Yes.
And, you know, I spoke on a couple of different occasions with our facilities director, Joe Wissabadi. You with us, Joe?
Uh-huh.
All right. And I think it's a wonderful idea that you're involved, knowing your organizational skills. I just asked you to work with Joe.
Sure.
You know, when it comes to doing anything toward buildings or toward properties here in downtown and just tying it into whatever valve was doing, as long as it's not going to cost us.
Sure.
But.
Wonderful.
Absolutely, and thank you for offering.
It's my pleasure.
We did not have anybody internally that was going to take that on.
I wondered, I thought there might be a line and I would give it to the back of the line with the hopes I could do it. Now, I have prepared a 75-minute video slideshow, but I see that the TV's down. I'll just wait until the next evening.
I don't know, I don't know if I could let you plug.
I thought it might be intentional that they were on.
We got a pool of chairs.
Thank you so much, Kevin, for reaching out and offering. I really appreciate it. I think it's going to be extraordinary having you leading that charge.
Well, it's my, my pleasure to do so.
Turn 250 years is, oh, that's a big deal.
Yes, it is. 190 is a pretty big deal, too.
So, well, thank you.
Yeah.
I don't think we need a motion for that.
Okay.
Unless you guys want to make it one. Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion as well as an approval, approval to make Kevin Pazar as acting co-chair of the official city of Albarazo.
Semi-quantennial.
Yeah, American 250, American 250 Festival, so, okay?
Thank you.
Motion approved. Thank you. Health Department, Carrie. We have an ordinance establishing non-reverting fund number 8942 for Jimenez Corporation grant for autism, elopement kits, and three state center classes fund, first reading. Do you want to very quickly tell us what that is?
Sure. So we are seeking some local funds for some of the programming that we have begun offering with some of our health personnel in Indiana funding. So this is status funding from Jimenez and it will go to help to offset the cost for the state center classes for those who are not able to afford it and then also to fund our autism and elopement kits for those who are referred to us and qualified with those as well.
All right, in order for us to do that, I must close the commissioners' meeting and open a public meeting, which I have just done, and I will ask, does anybody oppose creating this ordinance? Please step forward. Anybody opposed to the board commissioners approving this ordinance, please step forward. Third and final request, anybody opposing the commissioners to consider creating this ordinance, please step forward. Seeing none, does anybody like to come forward and speak in favor of this ordinance? Second call, does anybody like to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final call, does anybody care to come forward to speak in favor of this Seeing none, I'll close the public meeting, open it back up to the commissioners' meeting. What's your pleasure? Commissioner, motion approved.
Second.
They have a motion as well as an approval, as well as a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. All right. We got that.
We have a new friendly face here. Who is this?
This is Matt Paul, our new Porter County Health Administrator that was selected after 18 applicants, 10 interviews, and two final interviews. He brings decades of management experience, food services experience, vast knowledge of public health, and hopefully the same enthusiasm and charisma as Carrie to fill those shoes. But currently, he's working with Carrie to, as she mentors him in the role and interests to all the departments we work with.
Welcome.
Without further ado.
Welcome, Paul.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you all. Very excited, I appreciate it. All right, we have an ordinance establishing non-reverting fund, 89, number 89, oh, wait, whoa, whoa, whoa. Did that. Sorry. For some reason, I thought there was two. So these, Marv and Mr. Wissabadi. Start item one and just go down the list. And please don't take your time.
No, Scott, can we do like one through four and six to seven together?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So we have the additional electrical and ceiling work for victim's assistance at the courthouse with K2 construction in the amount of $31,147.16 to be paid from facility budget.
Just curious, why did this come about?
The prosecutor's office wanted additional outlets in the front area and they wanted the ceiling grid changed out. We kind of agree with them that that needs to get done because it was wet.
It was what?
It was wet. The ceiling grid, yeah. There was some condensation that was dripping on the ceiling grid. So we had the ceiling grid and some of the ceiling tile removed and replaced out.
And did you remedy the problem that's causing that so we don't have it again?
Yes, but there's still going to be condensate because we have a vent pipe that goes up through the ceiling there. So we're going to have to do some configuration and some masonry work in there to get that fixed. But that might be a little bit more expensive. That's on our radar, though.
Well, don't you think we should fix that first before we replace those ceiling tiles?
Yeah, the most, it happens mostly in the winter, so that's on our radar to fix here in the fall. And it's, the heat and the cold kind of mix in that area. It's been a long-standing problem there, so we will, we are going to get that addressed as far as some masonry repair that we're going to do there this fall.
Well, I could go with the additional electrical, but I would like to hold up on the ceiling work until we have that problem remedied. I just don't want us to have to keep replacing those ceiling tiles.
Well, I would agree with that. Motion? Motion approved.
Second.
Hold on. You're going to have to, you're going to have to describe specifically what you want to approve.
Okay, I move that we approve the additional electrical work for the victim's assistance suite at the courthouse. Is it K2 construction?
Yes.
With K2 construction and that amount would be what, do you know?
No, it's the whole amount. The majority of the work was basically for the electrical work.
Okay. Is that your motion?
Yes.
We have a second. Second, we have a motion as well as a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item two.
So we have annual agreement for the alarm system, for inspections for the county sheriff's jail with Ryan fire protection in the amount of $15,423.
Motion approved.
Second.
They have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item three.
Proposal for building and roof wash for the Chesterton ambulance garage with no scrub pressure washing in the amount of $1,550.
Motion approved.
Second.
They have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item four.
So we have an installation of a gutter downspout at Sheriff's Garage with Subshore Framing Company. I'll see in the amount of $3,000 to be paid from facilities.
Motion approved.
Second.
They have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
So we have spalding tree service to remove trees at the juvenile detention center and the Chesterton ambulance garage in the amount of $12,500. This will be paid from the facility budget and the 2024 bond fund for the JDC.
Motion approved.
Second.
They have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Six.
Next item is Crown ERM. This is for the quarterly generator inspections for the following facilities. Total amount, $8,000. So, these are for the quarterly inspections, which are the inspections that are required. They do load testing and all of that as a process of that. They're not doing maintenance, the next part, that is the maintenance portion.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
And this is for the biannual generator service inspection, or service maintenance for the generators at the following facilities, $19,100, sorry, $442.17.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Admin Building.
So, the next item is, we have two quotes for the hydraulic oil replacement for both elevators here at the admin building. The total amount submitted by urban elevator was $8,598. Auto service and repair, service and repairs, $18,375. Our recommendation is for urban elevator services.
And they're both going to do the exact same thing in the quarter?
Yep. It's not surprising. We had the replacement part at 157, you may remember, not too long ago, and it was significantly different cost for the same thing.
I move that we approve the request to have urban elevator service provide the hydraulic oil replacement in both elevators at the admin building.
Second, at the cost of $8,598.00. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
So, we received three of the quotes for joint ceiling replacement here at the admin building, recommending that we go with the lowest one, which is Restore Works Masonry for 148,000.
Motion to approve the Restore Works Masonry restoration at 148,000.
Second.
We have a motion as well as a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Elections Department.
The next two items are for the additional appropriations for Fund 1120 for the insurance restoration building account, 3620. This is for 385,000 in appropriations. This is for the insurance funds. These aren't additional tax dollars, but these are to appropriate those funds so that way we balance out at the end of the year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Next item is for the 1.5 million for the same thing, but this is for the property damage, or the personal property, business property.
We have a request here for an additional appropriation of Fund 1120 Insurance Restore Buildings Account, 4550 Personal Property Restored, the amount of 1,500,000. This is an insurance refund from Travelers Insurance for water damage at 157 Franklin Street. Entertain a motion? Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion as well as a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
The next item is for the fire alarm system for the Porter County Election Department with Ryan fire protection and the amount of $23,961 to be paid from the insurance fund.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item four.
The next item is for request for additional work for replacing the wall due to water damage at the election department with South Shore Framing and the amount of $2,000 to be paid from the insurance fund.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. 157 Franklin.
So, Western Waterproofing, this is for a contract for the repairs to the basement at 157 Franklin, the amount of 70,546. Contract was not ready for approval. I heard previous meeting, but we did agree to select them as the contractor.
Motion to approve Western Waterproofing, the amount of 70,546.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
So, the next item is for proposal for Cobra Services to install two air conditioning units in the basement at 157 Franklin, the amount of 7,473.10 to be paid for the 2024 bond. This is for the, there is currently no air conditioning or humidity control in the basement. This resolves that whole problem down there.
And it's really important that we have that because we're in evolution equipment back down there.
Right. I make a motion, propose Cobra Services LLC to install two air conditioner units in the basement of 157 Franklin in the amount of 7,473.10.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item three.
The next item is for the additional work for the basement flooring by JoJo Epoxy and Floor and the amount of $4,000 to be paid for the insurance.
And do you want to explain why this is important, that we're doing epoxy down there?
Yeah, so what this does is basically encapsulates your concrete floor in the basement so that way you're not getting moisture wicking up from the bottom, but it also provides a much cleaner, deeter surface for the basement for anything to be stored down there.
I'll make a motion for the additional work to basement flooring with JoJo Epoxy Floor and the amount of 4,000 paid out of 2024 bond fund.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
The next item is a request for the purchase for the vacant 7.5-ton rooftop unit, air conditioner heater for the 157 Franklin. This is for Roger Supply, the amount of $10,268.02 to be paid from the bond.
And we just did some air conditions up there?
We did. Last year, we did replace one rooftop unit. This is the other rooftop unit, which is not failed, but it is failing, so we already knew that was part of the bond process. We were going to get it replaced, we're just kind of moving that up the scale since that's kind of tore up right now.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
So, you have for you today, two quotes for the Phase Two window lintel maintenance at 157 Franklin. This will be paid from the bond fund. Our recommendation is Restore Works for 148,000.
Did they do Phase One?
Yeah, that was done under the Art Fund.
Right, but Babe, were the contractors that did Phase One?
Restore Work was the one that did Phase One.
Okay, and have we seen a noticeable difference since we did Phase One?
They're not leaking. It is noticeable in those windows, so we're very eager to get the rest of those done because some of those still are leaking.
Well, I move that we approve the Restore Works Masonry Restoration Quote for 148,000 for Phase Two window lintel and maintenance at 157 Franklin.
Second, we have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. JDC?
So, proposal for new vanity counter for the JDC restroom in the magistrate's office of Greystone, the amount of 1,522.21.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
So, the next item is for proposal for additional work for erosion control mitigation to the JDC with Horace's Landscape, the amount of 4,452.50. As you may know, Horace's Landscape's already begun. The project over there, this is additional work that we spoke out after we got through portion of it, but we do have, we're still well under what we kind of budgeted for that project.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item three.
So, the next item is for the fire alarm inspection for the JDC with Ryan fire protection and the amount of 2,949.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
So, we solicited for three quotes for the Phase Three carpet at the juvenile detention center. This would be paid from the 2024 bond. Our recommendation, however, is to go with value flooring, even though they are 1,063.41 higher because they've already done Phase One and Phase Two, so we're trying to keep things consistent with the work that's already been done there, knowing that some of the tile that's going to be removed is actually embedded in mortar, and that's going to require possibly additional work, so we would anticipate any change orders from anyone else on this.
Questions? Motion? No questions. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. D-911.
So, the next item is for replacement of batteries for the 911 UPS system. This is to be paid from the 2024 bond. We do have three quotes. Those were provided to you. Our recommendation is to go with Crown E.R.A.M. They were the lowest person to quote this project for 21,493.56.
And what does the life expectancy on these batteries still?
Five years is typical, and these need to be on a cycle to be replaced.
So, you're going to get that into the organization?
Exactly.
So, all of the UPS systems?
Yep, and we actually now have a part-timer from the university that's going to be putting our together, our PM schedules, so.
Motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as well as a second to select Crown E.R.A.M., 21,493.56. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
So, the final item on here is for the proposal from Crown E.R.A.M. for maintenance and cleaning and testing for the 911 UPS system. This is for 6,073.32.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Development and stormwater management, Mr. Jabel. Start with item one.
Since we don't have, from my PowerPoint, I will hand out my slideshow to you.
Do you have a fair one for each of you?
Just give it to me.
Thank you.
That's for later. Okay, we'll go as quickly as possible for you. First on the agenda is an ordinance for amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance establishing the minimum requirements for the development, construction, maintenance, and decommissioning personal solar energy systems and unincorporated Porter Company, second reading. We presented to you, or the Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation. You heard it in a public hearing at your last meeting. This is to iterate, this is only for personal consumption. It could be residents, it could be businesses or school complexes, et cetera. They're not allowed to sell it on the open market during commercial use. So, it's your pleasure, what you would like to do with it today.
Questions?
Motion.
Questions? Part? Questions? Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as well as a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. It is not ordinance.
And we have six applications in the queue ready to be approved today. Second is an ordinance for amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance revising Chapter Five, which is, deals with the exceptions for barn heights, specifically Section 5.20. First reading. Where we're having, not issues, but we need consistency. There is a provision in there for exceptions if you can prove an agricultural use. An agriculture use can be wide variety of things. We've been very generous with that, but there's some cases where they're coming in, they say they're planting a 20-tree orchard, or they're planting a bigger garden than the typical garden, or things like that, and they're coming in and asking for barn heights that can go as much as 50 feet. Now, in the agricultural areas, that's not so much of a problem. They got, generally, generally speaking, they have lots of room and lots of space to do that, and they can absorb that height. But when you start getting into the residential classifications of property or adjacencies to these residenials, then it becomes, these things become larger than life right next to houses that are most small. So, what we're recommending, and I have to bring it out, is that the exception before in the UDO applied to all zoning districts, whether they're residential, agricultural, commercial, industrial, et cetera. And what this amendment does is say that they are allowed only in the A1 and A2 automatically if they can prove such. If someone wants to do it on another property, we can deal with them on a case-by-case basis in front of them more than zoning appeals. So, the right hasn't been extinguished, it's just that we want to make sure that we've got a consistent way of dealing with these things, and if they don't meet the UDO, they still have that avenue they go, VCA, make that case. And that, in a nutshell, is what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay. Any questions by the board? We'll close the commissioners' meeting, open it up to a public meeting. Does anyone like to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Second call, does anybody like to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Third and final call, would anyone like to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Would anyone like to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Second call, would anyone like to come before the board of commissioners to speak to us in favor of this ordinance? Third and final call, would anyone like to come before us to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll close the public meeting, open back up to the commissioners' meeting, entertain a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as well as a second for approval in the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you. The next one, probably going to take a little time, that's what the handout was. I handed all you. I apologized to everybody in the audience. When we did it, the Plan Commission, I had a nice slide presentation to kind of illustrate what we're talking about, and the subject is, item three, an ordinance for amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance revising Chapters Two, Five, and Twelve to include barn dominions on first reading. The office is up latest. We've got a lot of inquiries on building what's called a barn dominion. If you look at your handout that I gave you on page one, if you go on the web and you type the word barn dominion, this is typically what you see. A lot of them are very attractive-looking structures, and a lot of them made from metal, but I wanted to point out, just because it's metal doesn't make it a barn dominion. It could be stone, it could be wood, it could be a combination of different materials. If you could progress in the slideshow, you go to the second one, now you're seeing the barn dominion that's also made of metal, but you also see that the appendage, which we call the storage area or the garage, or combined, is much larger. You go to the next slide, Slide Three, this actually was in the Unified Development Ordinance of one of the case studies we looked at in Indiana. I think this was in Newcastle. It looks, by all purposes, it looks to be like a barn, almost like a dairy barn you'd find in Wisconsin, quite large and multi-story. Starting on page four, I start breaking them down, not only what they look like on the outside from our architectural perspective, but also what they look like from a floor plan. Again, this is stuff that's readily available on the web anywhere where we did the research. As you can see there, it's a fairly attractive building. It's got quite a large spread out from side to side. And it's got a storage slash garage area, as you can see in the bottom left-hand corner of that floor plan. So it's kind of typical of a typical house, with a typical garage. Barrages used to be one car, two car barrages were common, then they became three cars, now we're starting to see four car barrages in residential neighborhoods. It's very common. On slide five, you're starting to see another variation of that aesthetically. I wouldn't find it very pleasing, but nonetheless, it does have a four car garage typically you would find in most houses as I said before. On slide six, now you're starting to see size changes. On slide six, you're seeing that the living space and the storage space are roughly equal in dimensions as far as footprint to the ground. And it's important to note that as we talk about this through the presentation, I'm not so interested, they could be two, three stories. What I'm talking about is the footprint. That's the key distinguishing factor that we'll talk about here in a second. On slide seven, you're seeing now a house, it's a two-story house, it's got some trim to it. But you see, start seeing the garage. The garage obviously is greater than 50%. As a matter of fact, I think in this case, it's like 65, 70%, 65% of the footprint space is brown. Slide eight, this is a presentation that was submitted to this office. As you can see, the area in green represents the storage garage space, blue represents the first floor. It was roughly 80/20 in proportions. The storage space was 80%, the living space was 20% in footprint. And if you look at the picture, and we'll see some elevational views, you can see the thing is really quite tall. Something to remember, in our U D O, primary structures in residential areas, the maximum height is 35 feet. Accessory structures, we let them to 20 feet. And there's good reason for that. When you're dealing with this type of hybrid structure, then they take on the entire height, which is the maximum, is 35 feet. If they were in agriculture, they could go 40 feet, okay? Just by right of being A one or A two, it's 40 foot tall. So you can see they'd be quite large. And if you flip to page nine, now you can see some of the elevational views, the one in the upper left, that's the front. The one to the upper right is the back. The one to the left, it would be the left side, front is facing left, and the one to the bottom right is facing right. In this particular case, this individual wanted to put, the bottom right would be 30 feet off the property line, right adjacent to an R one zoning subdivision. And that height of this barn, in this particular instance, I believe is 33 feet tall. So, in response to all that, we did a lot of research on the web. We tried to make this as simple as possible. The first thing is to define the barn dominion. Now, I don't want people to get caught up with barn dominion, what you see on the web. We're coming up with our own definition that triggers certain things. A barn dominion is a structure that is a home built to resemble a barn or is converted from a barn, often with steel and metal frame, or more conventional facade materials, characterized by an open floor plan, high ceilings with large non-residential utility spaces that may be used for shop or storage area, inclusive of garage. The attached non-residential space of the structure that is greater than 50% of the total structure footprint is a barn dominion itself. What we're saying here is, if you're building something that looks like a barn, aesthetically pleasing, as long as the storage garage space does not exceed 50%, they're just going to be treated just like any other regular residential home. If it does exceed the 50%, then we define it as a barn dominion. If it is defined as a barn dominion according to our definition, then what we're suggesting is, is it'll only be applied as a special use exception, meaning it's got to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they have to check off boxes based on the criteria we got in U D O now, to say that it qualifies to go. And some of those requirements are that they would, by special use exception, they'd be allowed in the two agricultural, A one and A two, and rural residential zoning districts. R one can be outside what we commonly think of a residential subdivision, but a residential subdivision could be an R one, R two, R L, all those other ones. So we decided rural residential tend to be a lot more open spaces, very close to the agriculture. The key is, is these things can get really tall, so the more separation, as we'll discuss, kind of makes, kind of baits that tallness when you're next to another use. The other criteria is, we already talked about the zoning setbacks. And a lot of the research we've done, not only did they say, even in the cities and towns, they wander on the perimeter of the towns adjacent to more agricultural land uses. And we found in one county that kind of hinted the same thing, that they were generally on agriculture, or they're the lowest density residential, which in our cases are. But we're proposing that the front setback be 100 feet, the side yard setbacks be 100 feet, and the rear yard be a setback of 100 feet. And then, at the Plan Commission meeting, it may not be in the version that's in your packet, Plan Commission meeting last week, we clarified to say, if one of those setbacks, usually the side or the rear setback, is adjacent to an R one or higher zoning district, that the setback goes from 100 feet to 200 feet to give that greater separation, because usually you're talking about developments that are very densely developed. Minimum lot size, it's what applies for agricultural districts. We have a minimum of 10 acres for most agricultural districts. And in the zoning, RR zoning districts, they got to have at least five acres. Minimum lot width would be 250 feet, because if you take the 100 foot and 100 foot, then we'd get 50 foot in the middle to play with as far as size of your building. The structure height would be as applied to any residential structure for that particular zoning district. As I said before, if they're in a residential RR, it'd be 35 feet, but if they're agricultural, it could be as high as 40 feet. And the distribution, that the non-residential utility space portion of the structure cannot exceed 70% of the total footprint area.
Say that again.
The total area of the storage slash garage area cannot exceed 70% of the total footprint area. So in other words-
And the reason for that is?
Otherwise, you'd be building a 800 square foot house.
Garage instead of a house.
You'd be building a barn or garage instead of a house. So we thought that was a nice cutoff meeting. Again, if anybody else wants to come in, they can always go to the Board of Zoning Appeals if they got a large R one piece of property. There are R one pieces of property that could be 20 acres in size. They still have the option, they can go before the Board of Zoning Appeals and have approval of that and make their case. So, that in a nutshell is the summary of what we're proposing. But the Plan Commission voted in unanimous, we're with the favorable recommendation.
Have you, in your department, have you mapped any of the other barn dominiums, barn dominions that we already have in Porter County against us to see, would they work? Would they have been approved or not approved?
The answer to that is, by and large, yes, there's not been many of them. I know the paper reported in Plan Commission, both Mike Keller and I said six or seven have been approved, but when we, I didn't get a chance to address that. But we did look at those, and some of them didn't even make the 50% rule, and some of them did have in excess of 100 feet. With the exception of one, they all had a minimum setback of at least 100 feet. So I would say of the six or seven, the vast majority of them probably wouldn't be defined as barn dominions simply because their garage storage area did not exceed 50%.
And what would they have been classified?
Just regular residential.
All right. We're going to close the commissioners' meeting and open up the public meeting. We're hearing the first reading of an ordinance for the amendment of the Unified Development Ordinance revising Chapter two, five, and twelve to include barn dominions. This is the first reading. Anyone like to speak in favor of this ordinance, please come forward. Second call, anybody would like to speak in favor of this ordinance, please come forward. Third and final call, anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance, please come forward. Anyone like to speak against this ordinance, please come forward. Second call, anybody like to speak?
You don't have to go second call, you already got something. I guess I don't understand all the details on this, but it sounds to me like I have a five acre lot, and it's only 165 feet wide. I couldn't build this on my lot because of setback requirements. Is that true?
That is correct.
So I don't understand what the county's thinking they're doing. You know, if I have a five acre lot that's 115, 1500 feet deep and 165 foot wide, I'm in a very non-residential area. It's open property. I should be able to build whatever I want in the middle of my property. And it sounds to me like, based on setback, this would stop me from doing it. Is that what you're hearing?
Yes and no.
What do you mean, yes and no? That's bullshit answer. Yes and no is like, you, let me ride the fence here.
No.
It's 100, you said 100 foot setback on the sides. I can meet the requirement front, and I can meet the requirement from the back, but I can't meet 100 foot setback on the sides of my lot. And if I want to build a nice big barn, and I don't care if it has any residential in it or not, if I want to build a big ass barn, I should be able to build it right there on my lot.
Let's clarify, let's clarify. Please don't do that. Let's clarify. If you're putting a house in it, and it's a barn, is all we're talking about. If you want to build a barn-
I don't care what the structure is. If I want to have partial house, partial barn, and I'm building it right in the middle of my favorite five acre lot, I should be able to do that. I am in a very non-subdivision type area, okay? Not subdivision. So you, to me, I can understand what you're saying. If somebody wants to bring in and build that kind of structure in a, in a, you know, one acre lot subdivision area, they can never meet any kind of setback requirements, but, you know, it's not, it's, my lot's big.
And you have the opportunity through the Board of Zoning Appeals to still get that.
I don't care. I think that's ridiculous that the county's trying to restrict people that own decent sized pieces of land to what they can build on their property based on some crazy assessment of what you're setting up there, you know?
Well, it's not so crazy, because the case I'm, hear me out. The case I'm talking about, this person's got 20 acres. And what they want to do, put it within 30 feet of other residential property.
Is it a squared 20 acres, or is it big long rectangular 20 acres? I mean, I, you know, I don't, I don't understand.
Sure.
So what, they've got 20 acres of land.
And they could put it anywhere they wanted.
There's decent way to set foot setback requirements that are okay, but, you know, 100 feet, I couldn't make 100 feet from my size. But, you know, that's ridiculous that I couldn't build a decent sized barn on my property and put a little residential area in there for, you know, I don't know, maybe my, for my son to live in someday, or any family member to come and stay with me and put a little residential area in there. Now you're saying that it's restricted based on setbacks and all this other stuff, which I think applies more to a subdivision atmosphere, and not for somebody that owns five acres like I do. So, I mean, that's, I object big time to this. I think this is crazy.
For the record, your name and-
My name is Joe Sparks. I live at 432 West 100 North in Valparaiso. And I, you know, I bought property because I wanted to be able to build what I wanted to build. You know, years ago, I built a barn on my property. I came to the county for a permit. I asked them what my setback was for the side, and they told me like three or five feet. So I built the barn. So now he's telling me basically that if I had that barn, and I wanted to build it today, I couldn't do it based on this requirement. So, I don't know.
What are the setbacks for a barn currently, not a barn dominion?
I don't think they're three or five feet, except in the R L zoning district. I have the sheet that's back on my desk, but think R one, it's anywhere from 15- Hang on, let me finish. 15 to 20 feet for accessory structure seems pretty common to me, up to 30 in some other places for an accessory structure. And we're not talking an accessory structure here. They're free to put accessory structures on the property just according to whatever we currently have.
I understand what he's saying, but, you know, hey, you know, to me, if I wanted to build a barn slash, you know, apartment area, and on the size lot that I have, and I want to put it right in the middle of my lot, I should be able to do it, and he's telling me I couldn't. Based on a setback requirement that the county's saying, oh, God, you got to be 100 feet from the sides of your property. Fuck. I'm next to the arboretum, you know? What's Arboretum going to say? Nothing. They've got all kinds of structures all over their place, so I'm right next to the stupid arboretum over there. I mean, hm. What's, is there a difference in where my sides are? You know, does it open up to an arboretum? Now it's, you know, now it's a whole different thing. Because the back of my lot and the side of my lot opens up to the arboretum. I mean, I just think for you guys to vote on something like this, and this short of a little shedding, I find to be ridiculous. And I think it would affect me down the road if I ever wanted to do something, not saying that I do. But there's, I mean, how many people in here really realize that this is being presented? How many people in the county realize that something like this is being presented? People that own property in the county. I guarantee none.
That's why we livestream our meetings.
What's that?
That's why we livestream our meetings. Plan Commission, and, and, and it's brought up in front of the Plan Commission, and this is the first-
We didn't even have, we didn't even have the show presentation to, I, I had trouble really understanding. I had to really listen closely to what he was saying. And, you know, that would screw me on my lot. I know that for a fact, if I wanted to build a barn dominion. I mean, I understand where you're going. You don't want that stuff in residential, residential subdivision areas. I don't care if they have two acres of a lot. You don't want to have me build something like that in the middle of a two acre lot in a residential subdivision. Different story. I think the whole issue could be addressed by what, what you own property wise and where is it?
And that's why-
You know, not, not, you know, that we're not in a big wide open residential area.
And I, and I, Joe, I think Mr. Jabel was trying to explain that. That's why-
Well, I think that based on his requirements, that he's proposing to you.
But that doesn't mean you can't get a variance.
I shouldn't have to apply for a variance.
Well, according to you, you stated, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the mean-
Right now, I wouldn't have to apply for a variance, but if he puts that in, if you guys enact that, then I'd have to come to you and beg for a variance, and then I'm at somebody else's discretion. I think that's ridiculous, when I own as much property as you.
Well, you stated you should be able to build whatever you feel like building.
I should be able to build that big barn, yeah, right in the middle of my lot, you know? Give me a setback, what, 25 feet? I mean, if I, I'm in a big open residential area, and if I'm 25 feet off my side property, I should be able to build a nice big barn, you know? Now, I mean, you can have height requirements telling me I can't build more than 35 feet. That's fine, you know? I agree with some of what he's saying, but, you know, just because it classifies as a barn dominion. You know, I have a little residential area built into a barn. All of a sudden, as a property owner, I'm, I'm screwed. I can't build it because of the setback requirements that somebody's setting?
No, I don't think that's what he's saying.
I think that's exactly what he's saying.
No, I think he laid out a protocol to ask me follow it in order for you to get variance to do that. You know, all, 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 all these lots are different. They all, they all have their own individual characteristics. But if you've got a house on one side of you, and you're saying, look, I should be able to build this however I want to build.
Is that what you're saying?
What's that?
That has a more, I'd be wanting to build my big barn right up next to somebody's house?
I don't, I don't know. You may not want to, Joe.
I don't know either.
But you can turn around and sell your property tomorrow, and the guy that buys it from you wants to. I think that's what Mr. Jabel's saying. There's certain, you know, there's certain protocols we must go through to protect everybody's rights.
I think you need to take a look at some of the property that's in the county. There's a lot of big five acre lots that are long and skinny, and, and, you know, hey, but all of a sudden, now you're sucking 100 foot setback requirements on the sides of the lot to be able to build a barn, a barn dominion. That person is messed over. They can't, they can't build it because you got, or without having to come in and ask for a variance and go with that. That's, that's all I'm saying. It's, I mean, to me, that setback requirement's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. But, yeah. Enough, I've said enough. I don't like the issue. I think what's being proposed here, I understand what he's saying, you know? If I want to build a, a three-story barn dominion, and I only own two or three acres, and I'm in a subdivision? Yeah. I shouldn't be able to build that at all. I mean, that should be for residential house. And there's already requirements for what a residential house is, you know, so. Barn dominions shouldn't be allowed in residential subdivisions. Maybe that's a better thing to say. But in property, with property owners, I, I think that might be something that needs to be reconsidered overall. So, thanks very much.
Thank you, Joe. I forgot where it went. Is it the second request? I believe it's the second request. Those not in favor of the sorties, please step forward. Anyone like to speak?
Hi, my name is Mary.
Hold, 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 hold. Please come forward so we can, we can hear you, ma'am. Please give us your name and your address.
My name is Mary Lawrence. I live in the city of Lundy, so maybe to northwest Lundy. It's a house that's nearly a 20 year. It's a nice, big subdivision. I backed up the land. We always tell the buyers, we don't know what's going to go in there, just set your rent. We always tell the buyers, we don't know what's gonna go in there, this is at your risk. This should not be, you shouldn't be punishing the people that own acreage behind the subdivision. And that's why I think the setback is just too extreme. A twenty-foot setback would be plenty, um, sign especially, because there are, like you said, these small parcels of the border county. And I think that's just a...
After the meeting, I know I couldn't do the slideshow. Come see me after the meeting, I'll show you an example.
It doesn't matter, it's as tight as what you're asking them to do because the people who live in a subdivision may have subdivision restrictions. They don't have to worry about that. You don't have to worry about the people that own land or have family land that's been divided since the family. You are, you are, and I don't want to care that you're gonna make them come ask for special permission. You're still hindering them to do what they want to do with their land. And then you say thirty feet? Well, is that true? Is it a one-house basement, is that you can do part of a thirty feet? Or is it thirty feet above grain? You're, you're just not, I, I feel very...
After the meeting, I'll show you the slideshow. No, really?
No, it doesn't matter, what you're asking is, is, what you're asking is, is long, just do it.
Look, we've worked hard on this. This took us six, hey, here we go. This took us six months to investigate it. And it all, ah, here we go. If you look at our zoning map, if you look at our zoning map... Then look at, study it very carefully, and you'll find R1 next to RR next to AG, it's all over the place, okay?
Are you implying a zoning to a real estate agent? I just want to be clear on that.
Well, if you want to speak, you speak after her, come up here and give us your name, okay?
I, I know it's a non-...
Backyard.
Couldn't they do it if I were one?
I don't remember why, but I thought we did.
But you do have residential, you do have rural residential.
We have five res, six residential classifications, R1...
Well, the city changed what they're doing then for the county, but, um, it's still, you know, who's living, we sell home or have land behind it. You don't know what's gonna go on, no matter what happens. You guys wanted to build a garage center behind some houses, and that was no problem. Didn't care how many, how tall that was. But it still didn't matter to those people that you were going, they were gonna come and talk.
Well, first of all, that's a record strike. We haven't proved anything on it, and we gave no indication.
I just feel like you are, you are hurting people, landowners, and they don't deserve to do this. You're putting that down way too far.
I, I too will make something clear that a lot of this has come, a lot of this has come up because of complaints from residents having this sort of thing built next to them. That's part of it. Part of it was when we had our public hearing, listening to one at the BZA, we did, because they were so close, so tall, next to each other, placed. And what I was trying to say about the, the quilt work pattern we've got in our zoning districts all over the county, you can't find one size fits all for every case. Now, every piece of property you cannot go build, because like the gentleman said, he's got a skinny lot and it's very deep. We got a lot of those too. And see, some people forget barn dominiums. They're coming in, they want to put in these big sprawling things, but they can't do it because it's just so deep. Because you also got your width depth ratio to deal with too, according to our code. So, we're trying to find, we're not trying to prohibit anybody to do it. We're just trying to be selective to make sure it fits in the fabric of the adjacencies. Because one thing our code says, not only does it say, it spells out, this is how you develop, this is the criteria for this zoning district, on how you can develop setbacks, heights, all that. But it also says in chapter one, which is often goes on red, that we have to make sure that we're making compatible land uses and structure uses in adjacent properties. Now, in the case of the gentleman coming up, he doesn't have anybody living next to him, he's RR. I realize it's a skinny lot. I can't, we can't design something that fits all cases. The Board of Zoning Appeals is there, and he can, from what he told me today about as a BZA member, I would feel very, uh, positive about what his condition was. Now, people saying, well, no, I gotta go do this and I'm not gonna get it, well, it's so wide and varied, we, we really did, we worked six months putting this together. And we did a lot of research online. We've got a lot of inquiries. We looked at some of the structures, and as I told you before, a lot of them wouldn't even qualify in the definition of barn dominium. You're talking about that exceptional group where the barn is monster-sized big with a house component. That's all we're addressing here. Everything else is still open, according to our permitting. The third and final call, anybody like to speak against this ordinance? Please come forward. Seeing that I closed the public meeting, open back up to the commissioners' meeting, entertain a motion for the first reading. Motion to approve.
I second, and I'm gonna second it because I understand Mr. Jabel's position that this is a very small subsection of the requests for buildings in our county. And because we do have the ability to go to the BZA for an exception. And I'm hoping, Mr. Sparks, that when you do go something...
That doesn't satisfy me at all. I, I can't believe you folks, and I know that some of you own property, so I can't believe you're, you're even consider... Do whatever you want.
Well, please be aware of a first reading, we are approving the first reading. The sec, well, Joe, I don't know what to tell you, I don't know what to tell you, partner. The second reading is when the ordinance is either voted down or approved. We're ju, we're just, he's come before us asking us to receive this business. That's what this board is doing. Now, I, I know you don't like it, and you're entitled to that, okay? But we have, we have a process here that we, we have to follow. So, yes, ma'am? I can't even, I can't hear you.
Can you add it in the plot line?
We may do that in the second reading, absolutely. I don't know. We, we could, we could vote it down, for all I know. Oh, I've been up here plenty of times where the, the second reading was voted down, plenty of times. But we'll, he'll have the opportunity to talk to us after this meeting, or, or the next three weeks, uh, explain, you know, better explain to what, you know, their purpose is here, what the purpose is here. Uh, if, if, if he's not able to do that or won't do that, uh, kind of, I kind of think this is DOA. Okay, but if he explains it, I, I will, I will tell you upfront. I, I understand, clearly understand why he's doing it. And, and if, there are special exceptions to everything. This is not to say you can't build on it. You, if you make your case that there's an express, and, and the board that you're appearing in front of, you know, that they, they, they agree with you, then you get the special exception. But if we do nothing, we're, we're just, we have a problem here, it is growing, but here. So, anyway, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
You have a matter to...
Did I? Motion to the second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item number four.
All right, Mineral Springs Road over the east arm of the Little Calumet River, which is Bridge 150, it's up in the town porter. Request approval for letting bridge replacement project, let it out for bids to be received on September 16th, 2025. Title sheet's over there for your signature, if you approve after the meeting. This is the project in Porter where the bridge was shut down because it was unsafe. Originally, they're gonna do federal funds, we switched, we're gonna do local funds, get expedite the project, get it done. Cleaning up, getting last bits of right-of-way amisements, but we should be ready to bid. Unfortunately, this project will continue to be closed, worked on, hopefully, yet this year, maybe demolition. Gotta watch for the salmonoid stream.
Okay, we did.
But probably next year before it's done.
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as well as a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item number six.
Number five.
Or five, I'm sorry.
County Road 150 South over Cobb Creek, small structure, PR 002, request to advertise for early procurement of material.
Board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as well as a second for approval, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Item six, request approval of change order one, bridge replacement, County Road 600 North over Salt Creek, Bridge number 98, fourteen thousand dollars, one hundred twenty, fourteen thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars increase for dynamic full pile load testing, which was, which originally was not in the contract that we gave. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Item seven, request approval of change order number two, bridge replacement on Lenburg Road or Salt Creek, which is Bridge 1009, ten thousand, eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty-four cent increase for protection of bats residing in structure, that's so we can expedite our work because of the bat season. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
By the way, can I just ask a question? When you're saying in that we'll pay eighty percent of the cost?
It's an eighty-twenty.
What is the amount that you're giving us, the twenty?
No. It's the hundred percent, they'll pay eighty percent of that cost, I'm sorry. I should have clarified.
Item number eight.
Request for change order number two, oh, I'm sorry. Change order number three, Marquette-Greenway Trail, otherwise known as the Calumet Trail, phases five and six, two thousand four hundred and seven dollars, seven dollars and seven cent increase for additional rip ratten for upstream culvert crossing, end up paying eighty percent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Last item, number nine, request approval, change order number four, for again, the Marquette-Greenway Trail slash Calumet Trail, phases five and six, sixteen thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty cents increase for additional bollards at the roadway crossings, that's so cars can't drive up the trail from the roadway.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Mike.
Valparaiso Events, Katie Abel. Katie, you here?
We have a request for the gate, uh, that's located on the east side of the county courthouse. Uh, the lot to be left open on Friday, September 5th. Again, the EMS setup for the court for the... We'll take this one first.
Board, which of you... Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
We have a request, this is item number two, request for the use of parking lot behind the 157 Franklin Street Building for handicap parking. The sheriff's department will be monitoring lot access throughout the day and will work with the 911 dispatch to set aside spaces and ensure that they have parking. Uh, also request access to the building roof, roof to place an antenna for the two-way radio used on the festival day. The antenna will be placed during the week leading up to the festival. Did you do this last year?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Request to place a sign on the courthouse lawn on Labor Day weekend to advertise the festival and schedule of events. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, yes, sir.
How long does the sign need to be up?
Um, it will be up through the festival day and then taken down on probably this Sunday afternoon. So that's under the...
We have a motion as well as a second for approval, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
And then the last thing, the Porter County Parking Garage, you determine the speed for the day so we can...
Twenty down.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care, Katie. Any other matter which may be properly come before the board commissioners?
My name is Kathy Watts, I'm from Valparaiso, Indiana. Yesterday, I contacted Commissioner Jim Bix, expressed concern over his public reaction to a social media post mocking mental illness and political differences. He responded not with reflection or leadership, but with this. "I am fully aware of your political leanings, and I have no intention of giving you the fight you are looking for. Let me be clear, this was never about picking a fight. I had no intention of being here today. This was about calling out a public official for endorsing a post that mocked people seeking mental health care and for holding political differences." His response unfortunately says a lot about how he sees his role, not as a representative of all constituents, but as someone who disregards those who challenge him. Dismissing a genuine concern as political noise is a way to avoid accountability. When a constituent contacts an elected official with a respectful and principled concern, the appropriate response is not personal insults, vague insinuations, or defensive posturing. Dismissing someone as someone like you and claiming to know what I am about without substance reflects far more on his own character than mine. I don't need to justify myself, Mr. Bix. What matters is that you are a public servant who is accountable to all of your constituents, whether they voted for you or not, and whether they share your views or challenge them. Mr. Bix, you may not want to hear about integrity or accountability from me, but judging by your responses, perhaps you need to. Mental health isn't partisan. Respect isn't partisan. Leadership means being willing to listen, even when it doesn't help people for you.
Well, let me respond to that. Uh, first of all, you have no, you have no idea why I like that, that post, number one. Number two, I find a little odd that you're, you're stalking anything that I, that I approve. Number two is, don't do that. Don't, don't do that, because you won't be here very long. Number two is, you, you've had your time to speak.
No, I'm, I'm here to listen to you and I overtalk.
Good, oh, good. Number two is, you are not a member of the nasty women's organization. Now, have you not been in front of this board and, and lied to this board about an accusation you made against Commissioner Rigness about her, her receiving donations from a board member? And then when I called, and then when it was called, you were called out on it, you looked at me and winked and smiled. I don't have a whole lot of respect for you, Kathleen, Kathleen, I, I don't. It's not that, you know, it's, it's not that I don't believe you have the right to say what you want to say, you do. But you're, you're not gonna pull me in to the games that you play. I'll like whatever I feel like liking on, on, on my, uh, personal Facebook page. There is nothing I have ever posted on, on Facebook that could be considered remotely controversial. Now, if I happen to like something that somebody else posts, so be it. You have no idea why I'm liking it, none. It could be simply I'm just acknowledging that it was sent to me. And, and, and you're, you're not gonna spin this, because my record shows anything, uh, you know, to the, shows everything to the contrary of my, my, you know, how I take mental illness in this county as, as a public official. So I know exactly what you're trying to do. And I'm not gonna, I'm not, as I sent, sent you that email, I'm not going to parlay with you, with it. I know why you're up here, I know exactly why you're up here. For me, it's not gonna care, because I gotta be honest with you. I don't give two hoops what you think. You've already proved to me you can't be trusted.